Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 28, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting. I have called us to order, and I will move to the approval of the minutes. We've got a couple sets of minutes in the package tonight. Let's take the oldest one first.
January 14.
January 14. I was not here, so I do not have any suggestions for those minutes.
I have reviewed the minutes, and I had only one change. There was a typo on the third page, and I've reviewed that with the Selectmen's office changing the word to revenue. Other than that, I would move to accept the minutes of January 14, 2020.
Heidi, thank you for my edits. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm abstaining, Heidi. Now, we'd like to consider the minutes of January 21, 2020. Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 21, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public comment for items not on the agenda. I recognize the Chief of Police.
I just wanted to sort of address the community and to the Board of Selectmen. This past Saturday, the Hingham Police responded to a disturbance call which resulted in a man barricaded in his apartment and threatening to shoot responding officers. During this time, dispatch also received a call from a male party who was in the apartment and had secured himself in a bedroom. The man feared for his life, and had informed dispatch that another man had agonism was irrational. Responding officers secured the scene and immediately activated our Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council. The Metrolec is a consortium of over 43 local, area, police departments, and other law enforcement agencies. As the situation progressed, we continued to call in resources from other communities and other similar law enforcement consortiums. Quincy, Weymouth, Boston, State Police, MBTA, Environmental Police all responded to assist along with the other communities. To remove the trapped victim from the residence, a SWAT team and support vehicles along with the Hingham Fire and Abington Fire removed him and other residents that needed to be safely removed from the area of the shooter and the upper floors. During the incident, four to five shots were fired at the responding units, and also an explosive device was thrown from the apartment, but it did not detonate. The Hingham Police, Hingham Fire, the Regional Dispatch Center, Shrek, Hingham Highway Department, public schools, school transportation, light departments, and some of the other town employees have been involved in training and preparation for such events and disasters. Because of this, the event ran like clockwork. Residents were evacuated and were able to be provided self-sheltering. Hingham School buses and MBTA buses were used. Foster School organized and prepared to provide shelter and support. The party eventually surrendered without incident, no one was hurt, and the residents were allowed to return to their apartments. The citizens in the town of Hingham have been so supportive of us, and it's just been amazing. Their response, I can't, I really get choked up when I talk about it. Unfortunately, they've been bringing too many pizzas and cakes. My guys are getting fattened up and are all going to the gym. It's unfortunate that we have to live in a society that we have to prepare, educate, and constantly update and train for such events. I want to thank you all for your support that you have given the emergency services in this town. I could not be more proud of all the members that responded yesterday and the community that supports us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
You know, I was reflecting on Saturday morning when the Board of Selectmen were looped into what was going on. Just, you know, you wake up on a Saturday morning, and you're heading out to walk your dog or go to the gym or whatever, and, you know, as the Chief said, our emergency services personnel were called to a highly charged situation, highly charged incident. And, you know, I, for one, and I'm sure we all did too, fear for the safety of our citizens and fear for the safety of our emergency personnel. But the training and the equipment and the relationship among the various constituencies here and across the Commonwealth and here across town, really, I think, made that response as positive as it was. And so I appreciate you, Chief, coming to share those remarks with the community tonight. Joe or Mary, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add.
I think you said it all.
Okay.
I would note that I'm going to be writing a lot of thank you letters.
Absolutely.
It'll be next week's project.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
And we would like to, because the Chief is here, we would like to take one item on the agenda kind of out of order, I guess, and that is, under possible votes, we will be asked to sign a letter of support for Congregation Shere Shalom's grant of application to enhance facility safety and security. I'd like to turn to the Chief to give us a little sense of what this is about.
I ask to be heard tonight because the Hingham Police have been working with the Hingham and Hall interfaith groups to increase our knowledge about various religions. We realize in a diverse world that we have to know about their cultures and values and circumstances and what their religions are about. It's regretful that houses of worship and parishes have become targets of radicalized groups. We have been meeting with the groups that have been educating them about increased security measures and awareness training. It's a difficult combination for houses of worship, as we all believe that houses, they should be places that welcome all people. The Hingham Police have been making safety assessments on many places of worship and offering assistance with instituting minor, less costly measures to improve safety. Not all issues are related to violent actions, but often could be preventative in nature. Learning to increase our awareness of mental health issues is a growing concern in our community. We've had parishioners and clergy join us at training and educational symposiums. The state of Massachusetts is now offering security grants for nonprofit groups. We are working with the Congregation Shuras Shalom on a grant to fund increased security measures for the temple. We consider this a pilot program, and we hope the next round of grants, we can include a small group of parishes to combine on a similar grant. The grants can be valued up to $50,000, and if we could learn from this first grant attempt, we hope that we can provide the funds that are needed to provide some of these increased securities for the other parishes. I would request the Selectmen to join the Hingham Police Department in a letter of support to this grant and the others that will be related to the future security grants for additional houses of worship. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Joe, Mary, any comments?
Yes. I have worked with the congregation and with the Chief in terms of this grant. The Chief of Police has prepared a letter that he referenced in support of the synagogue's application. You know, we live in Hingham, and you don't think that these incidents happen. I'm just going to read from the second paragraph of the Chief's letter. "The surrounding towns have investigated over 12 incidents of anti-Semitic vandalism in the past several years. On January 12, 2020, we investigated postings at the Derby Street Shops mall from a group known as Patriot Front. They are tied to anti-Semitic actions. They also posted about the incident on Twitter to gain a larger viewing. The temple is about one mile from the mall." So this is not something that's conjectural. It's here. And I would like, with the Chair's indulgence, to read the letter of recommendation that I would move the Selectmen to endorse.
Please do, Joe.
"The Board of Selectmen encourages and endorses the efforts of Congregation Shere Shalom to secure a grant for funding to enhance facility safety and security. The town of Hingham values and respects places of worship for all religions. We have a proud tradition of being a welcoming community. The Hingham Police Department is ever vigilant and on guard against hate crimes and those who would target faith-based organizations. Unfortunately, anti-Semitic events on the South Shore and throughout the country have prompted Congregation Shere Shalom to focus its time, attention, and resources on enhancing security. The synagogue has consulted with and received recommendations from the police and other security professionals to take specific steps to address facility vulnerability. We applaud the vigilance of Congregation Shere Shalom. There is no place for hate in the town of Hingham."
Well said. Anything further, Mary?
No, I would just, Joe, thank you and thank the Chief for working with the congregation to put this forward. I understand that the grant application is due this Friday, so...
In that line, it's Friday. They're actually filing it tomorrow.
Yep, so we'll enthusiastically support this tonight.
Great. Are there questions or comments from the public with respect to this letter of endorsement by the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none, I think we need a vote in order to sign the letter.
Okay, so I move that the Board of Selectmen sign the letter of support for Congregation Shere Shalom's grant application to enhance facility safety and security.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay, back to your regularly scheduled program. We will move to warrant article consideration. Citizens petition for the Hingham Cemetery expansion. Is the proponent here to speak to that this evening? Would you join us at the microphone?
My name is John Davenport, and I'm on the board of the cemetery, and Jay Sadlin is with me. He's our president, and...
Mr. Davenport, just for the record, if you could state your address for us?
Yes, 63 Birdie Avenue.
Thanks very much.
Jonathan Bouvet, who has been a lifelong resident of 24 South Street, has very generously offered to give the cemetery a parcel of land in the back of his property. I think you have the map there. If you go in to the front of the property on South Street, there's the two buildings, and then it rises very precipitously right behind those buildings. And then the top area, which abuts the cemetery on two sides, on the back and on the left side, as you were walking up toward the cemetery, is relatively flat. And he's offered to donate that parcel of land there, which is slightly smaller than a doubles tennis court, to give you an idea of how many, how big that is. And the reason that we're before you is that there is a statute which we were, Emily Wentworth, I'm going to give her a shout out in a minute, called our attention to that requires the approval of the town to use that land for burial, because it's not been used before, subject to the Board of Health approval. And so we have applied to the Board of Health approval, for their approval, and they've asked for a, and we've given them, we dug two test pits to test for groundwater. And a report, an engineer's report, has been submitted, and the only part of it that I can understand is that, I think it says that the site is above the 500-year flood, which gives us another 150 years, I guess, before we have a problem going back to 17th century when the cemetery was started. So, and we've also, and they also asked for that topo plan that you have to see that it's not too steep. And their hearing is scheduled for February 20. And this property is already zoned, the zoning law goes right in, the zoning line goes right between our parcel, or this parcel, and the rest of 24 South Street is official and open space where cemetery use is allowed, subject to a special permit. So that's why we're here. We've been to the planning board for the Form A, because this is a subdivision. They signed off on that last night. And so, assuming that the town meeting approves, we will take title to the property and apply to the ZBA for the special permit. I think we're pretty confident that we can meet all the requirements for that. So that's where we is. I would like to give a shout out to Emily Wentworth. She is, she called our attention to this statute, which I had not known about, and neither had the Board of Health. This is the first time that's come up before then. And she's also been very helpful on a lot of complicated questions on where the zoning line was and just been very helpful on this thing. And it's complicated for a small piece of property the size of a doubles tennis court. We need four, four boards of the town to approve.
It's a full employment act for us.
We make it easy for them.
Yeah, right. Okay. So that's it.
Well, I appreciate you recognizing Emily. We depend on her for so much, and this is just another example, I think, of her thoroughness to make sure that things are done correctly, so that when you receive the gift, you have the permissions in place to actually, you know, execute on that deed. So we're happy that you're before us tonight. And I just want to make clear to everybody that the Hingham Cemetery Corporation is its own entity, right? And this is just, this is just the permission for you to move forward to then seek appropriate permissions for, to add that parcel as part of your burial program.
Yes.
Okay. Joe, questions?
I do. I've got two questions. First, if we move forward with this warrant, does it involve the expenditure of any town funds? Tom, do you know?
Not that I know of.
No, I don't know. I don't think so.
Short of the potential for legal review here and there, but that's...
I think the paperwork said that it would provide added revenue for the Cemetery Corporation and that it would actually, you know, enhance their ability to be a self-sustaining entity.
Forever.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Which is great. And then, second question, and I don't know if it's for you or for Emily, but was there a butter notice program, and have we received any concerns?
The Board of Health, the statute says the Board of Health has to put out a notice of that hearing. Doesn't say, the statute doesn't say to whom, but I would assume it would be a butters. And the only butter is historical.
Right. I don't know if there's anyone else who would have expressed a concern, but I just want to make sure that we've given people an opportunity to voice them if there are any concerns.
Could I recognize Special Real Estate Counsel to the Town, Susan Murphy, to respond?
It's going to have a special permit process as well.
Yep.
All the butters will be notified, and it's going to be on the warrant.
Okay. But so as we're sitting here now, you've heard no concerns from...
I think Emily in the cemetery is dealing with most of the...
Right. Okay, so, what's that?
No concerns yet.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Love that qualifier at the end. Mary?
I would just first start out to just acknowledge and thank Mr. Bouvet for his very generous donation to the corporation. My only question, and it's more a procedural one for the Board, is if we're taking action on this warrant article tonight, should our vote be subject to an affirmative vote by the Board of Health on February 20? Just thinking, this is the only time it would come to us, so I didn't know if that was necessary or not.
This does say, subject to the approval of the Board of Health. Does our vote not pick up that language? I mean, the question itself...
I think our vote is just favorable action, so...
And you will get that Board of Health approval then before the warrant is presented at town meeting?
Yes. If for some reason, if they didn't approve it, I think we would have to withdraw the order.
Right, right.
If you cannot approve it.
Yeah, I think we could add that in. I mean, that was certainly my expectation, anyway.
I would, the warrant article expressly says that proceeding is subject to the approval of the Board of Health, so I don't think we need to have our motion repeat that.
Okay. Okay. It's certainly my expectation that this wouldn't move forward without the approval of the Board of Health.
Right.
And, yeah, I think you've recognized that. But good, I think that's a good comment. Any further discussion or questions with respect to the addition to the Hingham Cemetery? No? Okay.
I move to recommend favorable action of Article DD.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is the senior citizen means-tested tax exemption. That's a mouthful. So, you may recall, this is something we've been working on really for the last couple of years, and we have filed a special act requesting the authorization to allow a senior means-tested tax exemption to circuit-breaker-eligible senior citizens whose primary residence is here in Hingham. You know, the way taxation works at the municipal level, you have to play by the rules as constructed by the state. And in order to get exceptions to those rules, you've got to ask the state for those exceptions. So we actually have very kind of limited ability to pick and choose who we tax and how we tax them, again, without the benefit of a special act. This is one of the, this is one of the few exceptions that the state has allowed. There are probably, I don't know, 10 other communities or so that have advanced special act legislation in order to provide for this benefit for the neediest seniors in their community. There has been some talk and some advancement of a model act that communities could, you know, from time to time, you'll hear that we've adopted, you know, we've adopted an act that the state has enacted, and we just agree to abide by that act. That option is not available with respect to this means-tested exemption at this point in time, so we do need to pursue our own special legislation. It is still pending. Sometimes I think we all get a little frustrated with the pace of government in Hingham. I can only imagine the enhanced level of frustration potentially at the State House. So we are watching this. We have enjoyed great cooperation and endorsement from Senator Pat O'Connor and Representative Joan Moschino to advance this on our behalf, but the wheels of government are the wheels of government. So we're still waiting to hear and assume favorable action on our request. Part of what is identified in the special act is if we grant this tax exemption, right, we're telling some people out there in the community, hey, you meet these requirements, you don't have to pay your tax bill. But we still need, we need to find a funding source for the levy to offset that exemption. And that's, that's the action that's before the Board tonight, is to consider, A, how much of an exemption to grant to the circuit-breaker-eligible seniors, and to think about how we would fund that initiative. So with that, I don't know whether you all have remarks you'd like to make or questions?
Karen, you've really been, you've been spearheading this, and thank you for all the great work. Do you have a recommendation for us?
Well, so my recommendation, at least with respect to the percent of the amount of the circuit-breaker income tax credit that we would allow as an exemption, would be 100% of that amount. And we, and Sue, maybe you want to take us through the numbers a little bit. We ballpark that if everybody in town that's circuit-breaker-eligible files the application and the application is granted, it would cost us around $500,000.
Exactly.
Right.
It was 503, I believe.
Okay. Do you want to maybe take us through the, kind of the process that got us here, or tell us any stories?
Tell us any stories. I do remember that we did a survey of a circuit breaker, and there was over 500 total people that could, that got the circuit breaker. If they apply for this, they can get it. If they get the means-tested exemption the next year, it could throw them off the circuit breaker. It's a roller coaster.
Yeah.
So we don't know how many people will apply for it, but if everybody does, I think the average was 964.
Dollars?
So that, yes.
Right, if we set it at the 100% circuit break.
Yes, so that would be the 503.
Right.
We just need a funding source for it.
And so the funding sources, I know I was trying to, I was trying to figure out a way to maybe use the under-levy amount as the funding source, because the under-levy amount is, coincidentally, $500,000. But I mechanically still don't understand how that might work or if it works.
Well, what we'll do...
It's kind of like my fun balance thing that I did last year.
It's those magic numbers. What we'll do is we'll tax for the full rate, and then we will take that $500,000, and we will throw it in the exemptions account, the overlay account. And that's where all the exemptions will come out of.
Okay. So we can, so it is possible to identify the funding source as the, what has formerly been the under-levy amount. So, and Mary's probably better at this than I am, you can levy, you can increase your levy every year up to 2.5% of your tax base, right? And so we've decided, and we decided this as part of the construction of the middle school, we decided to not levy up to our full authority in an amount equal to $500,000. And that is a tax benefit that gets spread on every single tax bill across Hingham. Everybody gets a little piece of that $500,000. And one of my views, and I think that was great, and I think it shows restraint and it shows respect for taxpayers, if we can, if we can reduce the effect of a major capital project like the middle school in any way, let's do that. But one of my questions, and I'm not wedded to this as the funding source, but one of my questions with respect to that under-levy, that use of the under-levy, was are we getting the most bang for the buck when we take away $500,000 of our spending? And to me, this is great bang for the buck, because it's saying to our neediest, so instead of spreading that $500,000 benefit out across the town, we are narrowly focusing that benefit on our neediest senior citizens. And we're saying, you would then get the benefit of this $500,000 that we will not levy.
And the way I look at it is, for the last 10 years, every taxpayer in the community has enjoyed the benefit of this. And by the way, collectively, we've, it's been $5 million that all of us collectively haven't paid over 10 years. One of the things that we hear so much from, you know, the 43% of our, of our community who are senior citizens are that there aren't, there aren't a lot of property, there aren't a lot of tax benefits for people. And, you know, sometimes, like when we're doing the budget, we'll have somebody say, well, why can't you just, you know, why can't you just not tax a certain group of the, part of the community? You know, if we're building, you know, if we're building a new school, you know, can we selectively, you know, put that tax increase on different people? And the answer is, we can't. Massachusetts law doesn't let us do that. And there are very few, there are very few meaningful forms of tax relief, particularly for our most vulnerable citizens that are available. And this is a whopper. This is a great one. So I, I like the idea of doing it. We can see where we are after a year. Any, anything, Sue, would it be fair to say that anything that, so let's say that we assume that 500 will go, and let's say that at the end of the year, only $300,000 of tax relief is used, is people are able to take advantage of it, what happens to the other 200,000?
It stays in the reserves for abatements and exemptions until the Board of Assessors releases it.
Okay. So, and I think you bring up an important point. This is an exercise under the special act that the Board of Selectmen would be asked to undertake every year. So we could figure out amounts, we could figure out percentages, we could figure out, you know, the relative delta, that what are people using? You know, we are now taking the most conservative approach and trying to identify a funding source that would, that would, that would give us the ability to allocate to anybody that we think is eligible, given the current demographic data that we have.
And, you know, I just add one other financial point. I think through the debt presentations we've seen, I think we, as a community, understand that a renovation or a replacement of foster school can't be absorbed in our budget. We're going to have to ask people if we can raise their taxes. Wouldn't it be great if, you know, a year before we're asking people for a tax increase, we're offering up to $1,000 a year in tax relief for some of our most vulnerable citizens? I just think it sends a wonderful message that we're sensitive to the economic situations of people in our community.
And I'd just like to, you know, thanks, Sue, G. Montgomery, Rick Nowlan, members of the Elder Services staff, because we worked really hard, I think, as a team to put this forward. Joe, questions?
Just looking at the draft act and the draft bill, so it says that Board of Selectmen shall annually set the exemption amount to be within the range of 50% to 100%, so we're doing that, of the circuit-breaker income tax credit. So this is clearly an annual vote that we will need to be looking at. Am I correct that our funding source is technically called the exemptions account? Is that, that would be the funding?
The overlay account, yes.
Overlay account?
Yes. Technically what it's called.
Exemptions was too clear, Joe.
Okay.
And actually, I think as part of our team, I forgot to recognize our VSO, who is also part of those conversations as well. Thank you. Questions from the audience on this? I know it's kind of a technical subject, but I think our heart's, I think, in the right place here, so questions or comments with respect to the senior means-tested tax exemption? I would.
I'll make a motion to use overlay.
Is that right?
Yes.
The overlay account?
Okay. The overlay account as the funding source for the senior citizen mean-tested tax exemption, subject to the approval of... subject to the approval of Bill S. 2243, an act relative to the establishment of a Hingham means tested property tax exemption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move that the Board of Selectmen set the fiscal year '21 exemption amount for the senior citizen's mean tested tax exemption at 100% of the amount of the 2019 circuit breaker income tax credit, subject to the approval of Bill S. 2243, an act relative to the establishment of a Hingham means tested property tax exemption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Sue, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
And now we have the option to purchase 270 Central Street. You know, ma'am, so let me just tell you how this, this part of it's going to work. What we typically do will be to introduce the topic. I'm going to ask Emily Wentworth and Tim White to come up to the table and help us talk about it.
What about public comment? What happens if?
Okay, can, can I?
We didn't know.
Who called it? Okay, okay. Okay, Libby?
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing right now, okay? Oh, public comment?
Public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, I call for public comment.
But then it was, you didn't realize you can dump.
Okay. Well, we could take some public comment when, when this is finished. Okay? Sure. So what I thought you were asking was how this is going to go. So we will discuss it here as the members of the board. Real Estate Council Susan Murphy will join us. Members of the board will get a chance to ask their questions and then, then we will open it up to public discussion on this particular question. Okay? So Emily, I don't know whether you want to-
Sure. Emily Wentworth, Senior Planner for the Town of Hingham. The agenda item right now is 270 Central Street. The town recently received a notice dated December 18th of 2019 of an anticipated sale of a deed restricted home, again at 270 Central Street. So the restriction provides this board with 45 days from the date of notice or until February 3rd of this year to either, one, exercise the town's option to purchase the property as provided for in the deed restriction, or grant a release of the town's option to allow the owner to convey the property to an income eligible buyer. By way of background, I know this board's familiar with it, but maybe for the benefit of the public, the property is improved by a single family dwelling. It was constructed by South Shore Habitat for Humanity in 1995 on land that was acquired from the town for nominal consideration, just a dollar. There is a deed restriction in place, as, as has already been mentioned, but it unfortunately doesn't comply with current standards established by the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development. So the town in the past has tried to add it to our subsidized housing inventory, which is maintained by DHCD in order to, to qualify it for inclusion, but the state's rejected the request because the, the restriction doesn't include a certain number of procedural processes and protections that are standard today. So if the board were to exercise its option to purchase the property, the town, acting through the Affordable Housing Trust, would be able to update the restriction in order to qualify it for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory, prior to then re-conveying it to another income qualified and appropriately sized household. The Affordable Trust considered this request again and reaffirmed that it would be interested in acquiring the home, interested in able, if this board were authorized, authorized it to do so, for the purchase price, which is $118,000 and 240 cents approximately. So you heard a similar request in July and what has evolved since that time is that the, the estate of the original owner of the property received an offer to purchase from a relative. The prospective buyer has since submitted his financial qualifications, both to the town and to South Shore Habitat for Humanity. We've confirmed that under kind of the, the minimal standards in the current deed restriction that he would be income qualified. So if the town released its option to purchase, the estate could convey the unit to him, but the unit would remain ineligible for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory. So this is a difficult decision for this board to make. The prospective buyer would realize, you know, personal benefit clearly in, in buying the home that he's lived in for some time now. On the other hand, there's substantial public benefit to be gained if the town were to exercise its option in bringing the deed restriction up to current marketing and monitoring standards, making some improvements physically to the home, and then selling it through an affirmative fair marketing process, again, to an income eligible and appropriately sized household. The, the benefit in addition on the subsidized housing inventory, in terms of our formula, is that this one unit adding it to the, the numerator in the formula would offset the construction of 10 market rate units in our denominator. So it's, it's significant.
Tim, do you want to make any comments at this juncture?
Sure, briefly. Tim White, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. Good evening, folks. 35 Campbell Beach Road. The Trust is interested, if the, if the Board of Selectmen is inclined to match the offer, we would be very interested in, in taking on that property. An average three bedroom home in Hingham goes for over $800,000 and we at the Affordable Housing Trust have very limited funding. To leverage this opportunity to buy a piece of property in Hingham at $118,000 simply doesn't happen. And given that opportunity, we, that's our mission. Our mission is to, to create, maintain, and improve on affordable housing, as set forth in the bylaw of Town Meeting 2007. So that's the first reason why. The second, as Emily said, is that should we purchase it, then we would work to amend the affordable housing restrictions, to add it to the, our affordable housing inventory as well. And at the same time, we recognize that, again, with the limited funds we have, we would still then have to make some improvements to the property to get it ready for a, a family to move in. And that's the third reason why, really, is that as impressed as I was by the young man who's interested in purchasing his property, having heard him last July, and I was very impressed by him, it's a three bedroom house and there are families that need three bedroom houses in Hingham Affordable Houses. So for those three reasons, I'd ask the Board to consider purchasing the property.
Susan, any comments at this point?
That pretty much lays out the, the process that's happened to date.
Okay. Joe?
I've read the deed and I've looked at the material and I, I see a real, a substantial benefit to the town. And I view this board really as, as acting as fiduciaries in this situation. This is a town asset that I think should be used for the benefit of the town.
I knew back in July, when this first came before us, that this is one of the more difficult decisions that the board makes. And I've thought about it considerably during that time and I appreciate the way that we've allowed the process to play out, to get as much information as possible, to fully vet all of the different options. For me, I've been in this room a couple of times making votes on development agreements to build large housing projects in this town because the town had not, was not in its 40B safe harbor. And in taking those votes, we heard from a lot of citizens and one of the things, one of the underlying themes that came through in a lot of that correspondence was a desire for the town to be proactive in maintaining its safe harbor status. And that was something that, that I felt like I committed to the community when I made those votes for Broadstone Bear Cove and the, and the Avalon Project. This is one of those types of measures that I heard from the community that they wanted the town and the board to take advantage of if it came along. It doesn't make the decision easy, but I feel like, in addition to Joe's points, which I concur with, I feel like this is following through on a commitment that I made to the town on two occasions after two very difficult votes.
Thank you. I think at this point, I'll open it up to comments or questions from the public with respect to 270 Central Street. Is there anyone here that would like to be recognized on that? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is David Cunningham. I am here on behalf of the estate. I live in a different town, but I do practice law in Hingham. I'm filling in for somebody who does live in the town, but can't be here tonight. His name is Kevin Burke and he's in the process of administering this estate. The personal representative is here and the proposed purchaser is here. The proposed purchaser is here. This is a property that the proposed purchaser has lived at for 25 years. It was purchased by his mother, a former in-town employee, as part of an affordable housing program at that time. And her son now qualifies to purchase it based on affordable housing guidelines that are already in place. He's in the process of getting his mortgage financing put together. It's likely to be approved any day now. And, you know, the unfortunate position that you find yourselves in is if you vote to exercise your option to purchase this property, you'll be displacing somebody who will benefit from affordable housing by doing that. And that certainly is not the outcome I'm sure you're looking to accomplish, but he lives there now, he's lived there most of his life, he's a lifelong resident of the town, he needs affordable housing. If he loses the opportunity to purchase this house, he probably doesn't live in the Town of Hingham afterwards, just based on what your own presentations were talking about. If the average price of the house is a lot more than the $118,000 that we're talking about, he'll have to move to a different location and it probably won't be an ownership situation. So we know that his mother would love to see him purchase this property if, if it was something that could be done. The other thing, I don't know if you've considered it or not, but if you're looking to update the deed restrictions, I'm not so sure you're prohibited from doing so by continuing to work with the owner of the property. So if he purchases the property and there is a request on the part of the town to work with the town to update the deed restrictions, I don't see any reason why he's going to do anything but cooperate. He lives in the town, he's, he's interested in all of the same issues that all of you are interested in. And he would probably view it in his best interest to help the town either get to that safe harbor or stay in that safe harbor. And I'm not sure you have taken that into consideration because whoever purchases the property is still going to have to be somebody who qualifies for affordable housing in the town. And the unfortunate part of all of this is that if the town buys it, it could very well be somebody who lives outside of Hingham who ends up buying it down the road and displacing somebody who's lived here all his life. So we would ask, on behalf of the estate and on behalf of the proposed purchaser, that you actually provide the release as opposed to exercising your option. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to help.
Do you see any way that we could work with the current occupant and get this property into our affordable housing inventory?
I don't see any reason why he would do anything but cooperate.
Rather or not, I'm assuming he does cooperate, but even with his cooperation, would be, would we be able to get the house into our affordable housing inventory?
Well, that I'm not really sure of. And frankly, I'm not even sure that if the town exercises its right to purchase it, whether we'll be able to get it into the inventory that you're concerned about.
So let, let's stop right there. I think that that's a technical enough question that I think we should ask Real Estate Council to respond.
So the, the issue with, when it comes with respect to qualifying it for the inventory is that affordable housing is done on a household size. So an individual would never qualify under the state guidelines for affordable housing and for eligibility for the housing inventory. For, an individual could never qualify for a three bedroom house because the goal is, is to match housing with the size household that needs it. So we have now, and I'm, and I'm just using this for an example, not as a, you know, what the solution would be here, I'm just using it for example, some of the new apartment buildings that have been built in Hingham over the last couple, few years that have affordable housing component have one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom apartments. An individual could only qualify for a one bedroom apartment. If you have a couple, they might be able to get a one or two bedroom apartment. If they have children, depending on how many children, then they might qualify for a two or three bedroom. But, you know, that, that's the difficulty with having a, a single individual live in an affordable unit with three bedrooms. Even, even if the deed restriction were to be updated as offered, it would still not qualify until some point in the future, if this individual were to purchase it, when he went to sell it. At that point, then those new, you know, that could kick in. And the, in the alternative, if the town were to purchase it now and the housing trust were to market it, it would market it in accordance with those guidelines and they would market it only to families that would qualify for a three bedroom. So I know that this is kind of putting the, the personal, individual issue aside. I'm just responding to the legal issues regarding, regarding how the qualification, income qualification and qualification for the size of a home are two different, you know, parts A and B and typically both apply. You know, the one other thing I, I want to mention is that, you know, as much as, kind of when you stand in there and you think about it, it may not make sense, the affordable housing, when it is, you know, approved for a buyer, in this case, the original owner, is done for them on their qualifications and it doesn't build in passing property down to family members as someone might do with their own market rate home. It's just not built in. It's, the way it's structured with deed restrictions is that when it changes hands, then that process needs to start over. And the laws and regulations and guidelines that the state agencies that are in charge of housing, Department of Community Housing Development, their own guidelines and regulations don't build in for that, that circumstance, that there may have been people who grew up in a home, but now the original qualified owner has passed on, either selling it or passed on, as in this case, and that they'd want to leave it or let it, you know, pass on to their family members. So those are all the legal issues around the question.
Is there a lottery issue as well?
I'm sorry?
Is there a lottery issue as well? The next person, the next occupant would have to go through a lottery or some sort of selection process? So we could not proceed with this occupant, even if it was a three person?
Right, right. So I'm saying- Yes. It would need to go through all of the current regulations that include the process for how you choose the next owner as well. for how you choose the next owner as well.
Anything further?
One thing that I'm not so sure you're taking into consideration, though, is whether you have the power to change the restrictions. I mean, the restrictions were put on 25 years ago. There's nothing that says the power to change the restrictions exists until they expire.
Well, the town...
I don't think they expire until five years from now.
Right, but the town is the holder of the restriction. So if the town owns the property, then when the town conveys it back out, it, once it owns it and it holds the restriction, the restriction merges into the town's ownership. And so when the town conveys it back out, the town would have the ability to convey it back out with appropriate restrictions.
Cunningham, with all due respect, we're not going to get into a lot of back-and-forth with real estate council. At this juncture, you know, the board of selectmen is going to ask you a few more questions, and then we're going to move on with our deliberations. Appreciate it. Do you have any further questions? Mary?
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further comments on 270 Central Street from the public? Yes, sir. Come on up to the microphone. Name an address, if you will.
My name is Jason Warren. I live at 270 Central Street. The person trying to purchase it. I wanted to come up and just say thank you to everyone for everything. Emily was a lot of help. As you know, I'm trying to buy the home. I've been a resident of this community my whole life. I want to build a family here. I don't see a possibility for that without this home. Like I said, I've been a member of the community 35 years, and the thought of having to leave that breaks my heart. But I did want to come up and say thank you, and that's about it.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Further questions or comments? Okay. So, you know, as Mary and Joe have both said, this is just a really hard issue, because it's an emotional issue. I think it's a legal issue. It's an issue about the affordability of living in Hingham and kind of the challenging commentary that without something like this, folks can't reside in this community. It's unattainable. This is a very kind of particular circumstance that we find ourselves in. Again, when we're balancing, I think, a three-bedroom household as well as our affordable housing inventory and the importance of that to the town. And this board, prior to me sitting in this seat, this board's taken a lot of very difficult and challenging votes along that line. This one is another very difficult and challenging vote, albeit on a discreet property. So I don't know if my colleagues have anything further to say or whether you're ready to move forward with considering a vote. You know, I think for me, like Mary and Joe, you know, I reflected on this since last July. We worked through staff and our attorneys to consider all of the issues and all of the possibilities. But I think for me, the household issue is an important one. It's a three-bedroom home, and I think that it's important to me that we provide, I guess, as much affordable housing as we possibly can. That coupled with the ability to add this to our affordable housing stock is a compelling, I think, argument, again, for me as a person who's charged with representing the best interests of the community. Doesn't make it easy. Doesn't make me happy about it, but those are the couple of factors, I think, that have resonated with me.
I mean, I concur. I think you could tell from the discussion, we were pushing to figure out if there's a way that we can meet our responsibilities with respect to affordable housing while keeping the current resident there. And that's something that we've pushed. I know I've had discussions with council, and I sit on the Affordable Housing Trust, and this really, other than exercising our option, I don't see any other way that we can fulfill our responsibilities.
Anything further?
Do we have the motion from Susan?
Do you have the updated language, Tom?
So I would make a motion to exercise the town's option to purchase the property at 270 Central Street for $118,241.19 pursuant to the terms of a deed dated July 11, 1995 and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 13696, Page 2, and to authorize the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust to both act on behalf of the town to purchase the property and to extend the option for up to three months on terms and conditions acceptable to the town in order to allow the current resident to find alternative housing. Before finishing the motion, I'm just going to ask council, do we want to add a plus or minus to that 241.19 in case there are calculation issues that haven't been quite taken into account?
You have to match what the offer was. The offer was for the maximum resale price of $118,241.19.
Okay, so this is the dollar. Okay, so then motion would stand as is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your attention. I appreciate it. Okay. So I'm going to take a couple of minutes right now and recognize public comment that didn't get recognized at the beginning of the meeting. So if anybody has a couple of quick things to say before we move to the CPC portion, yes, ma'am? If you could come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Holly Constant, 34 Jarvis Avenue, Hingham. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment. I know that the public comment related to the budget for next year, specifically the school budget, has been discussed, but I just wanted to come today to reiterate the critical nature of funding a director of the Department of Fine and Performing Arts. The main reason I come to this as a parent myself is that the kids nowadays are under incredible stress and receive lots of anxiety, and things are decided by the thinnest of margins. And the ability for kids to have an outlet, a creative outlet in the arts, whether it be in music or pottery or woodshop or photography, are really, really important to the mental and social health of our kids. And I know that this position has been recommended. It has not been funded, and I would encourage you to fund this position for a number of reasons. There are new national standards. There are new state standards in the arts that need to be integrated so that we have someone who's looking at the big vision of what's going on in our school system, maximizing the opportunities we have, coordinating between K and 12, and really integrating the kids. The facts have been laid out in terms of, compared to our 20 MCAS schools, we have a very low participation rate of 35%. We have no electives in the arts at the high school if you're not performing. We have the arts being pushed out of classrooms in elementary schools, and we don't have an advocate. We have a director of athletics. We have department heads in other places, but we don't have anything for the fine and performing arts. And I think that with the pressure and the things that kids are dealing with nowadays, this ability to sort of, phew, take a breather during the school is really important to their mental and social health, and I would ask for your reconsideration of funding that position when you're looking at the budget. I know you have a lot of very difficult things to consider, but I feel that for our kids and for the health of the community long-term, it's an important thing, and I ask for your reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to say a couple of things. That's okay. So when we take public comment, because these topics aren't posted, we can't get into a big discussion about the merits of that particular topic. But there are two things, I guess, I'd like to say. One, we have appreciated over the last couple of weeks several very, I think, detailed and thoughtful and comprehensive emails from folks who are very concerned about the school budget as well as the town budget. So, you know, I think at the beginning of the process, we all said, you know, this is your budget. These are your tax dollars. So, you know, the more that you participate in these decisions, really, the better for all of us. And so I, and I know my colleagues, share my thankfulness for your willingness to step up and share those thoughts with us by email. They've been detailed. People have taken a lot of time, I think, to put their thoughts down on paper. So that's number one. Number two, I think just generally speaking, it's important for folks to understand how the school budget comes through the board of selectmen, and that is, we will hear, I think it's on February 11, with our advisory committee colleagues, we will hear from the school committee on the budget that they are presenting. When the town, when the board of selectmen votes and when the advisory committee votes, they vote an overarching number for the school budget, and it's really up to our elected school committee to determine the priorities within the number that they've been given. So I hear these very particular concerns, and I know that our school committee has a very difficult job in sorting through those priorities and determining what aspects of the budget need to be funded. So procedurally, again, the board of selectmen and the advisory committee will recommend one number. That number will be the number that is the school budget, and then within that one number, the funding priorities are determined by our elected school committee. Anything further for public comment? Okay. So we will move on to the CPC presentation. Victor, you're called to order, right?
We're in recess, so we...
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for joining us. Sure. Bob? Evening, gentlemen. Want to have a seat with us? Do we have a clicker?
You need the lights dimmed, or you?
Yeah, can we, so if you're going to, are you going to stand and present? Do you want to take it out of that? Sure.
You can even do it from the microphone, it's easier.
Oh, okay.
You can face it. You just say the standing.
Let's see if I can do it without my glasses.
It's a degree of difficulty? Yeah. Okay, if you can introduce yourself and...
Sure. Hi, I'm Larry Lanier, 22 Water Street. I'm the chair of CPC, and I'm here presenting tonight with... That's okay. But I'm okay to keep going, right?
You've got to squeeze the bottom.
I really am. Do it. Oh, there we go.
It takes a village.
Are we good?
That's Evan Sheehan, everybody.
That's Evan Sheehan. That's not one of those.
All right.
Do I need to start over?
No, we got you.
And I'm here with my vice chair, Dan White, and we are excited to present to you our recommendations for Town Meeting 2020. Just a few numbers to start. Tom, am I just clicking the right arrow?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Okay, so here are the projects, and here are our recommended allocations for each. There are seven projects. First is resurfacing the tennis courts at Plymouth River School for $75,000, fixing the clock faces at the Second Parish Church Clock Tower for $32,030, contributing $272,300 to the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust, $500,000 for design and construction documents for new pool, for new town pool at the country club, $8,000 for improvements at the laner land, which we'll explain, $772,000 toward the purchase of the Benjamin Lincoln House, and $40,000 to clean up and begin to restore the toppled and broken gravestones at Canterbury Street Cemetery. We also have debt service that we have to be paying. That's already kind of on the books. One is $133,000 for the Heritage Museum, and that will be the last payment for that project. $356,000 put aside toward the purchase of the laner land, and this year, our recommendations would incur new debt service of just under $500,000. So that new debt service isn't to be paid all in one year. That's the new debt service we're recommending that CPC incur. This is the money we got, whoop. This is the money we got to spend, how it gets allocated. So Hingham chooses a 1.5% surtax on its, hold on, a 1.5% surtax on its taxes. So gee, I'm not even touching it.
Be worse than I am.
Worse than you are. Anyway, so in that one point, oh darn. Tom, what am I doing wrong?
AV training. Got it.
Michelle, can you unslide, show me? Let's see if it happens. No.
You know, this never happened with the old overhead projector. Am I right?
I thought you were going to say it never happened with the old CPC chair.
See how it's clicked after four seconds?
I think it's working. Okay. So anyway, in the 1.5% surtax on our real estate taxes, the town collected $1,081,374. The state match was $152,625, $152,625, and return funds, meaning clawbacks from projects that didn't happen, was $459,000. That's very unusual. From 2003 to 2018, clawbacks averaged $66,000 a year. So we don't usually have that much in return funds to spend. So the total budget was $1,692,999. Remember, which some of that has to go to the projects that are bonded, right? So we didn't need any money for the CPC administrative fund, because the committee administrated itself this year, and we didn't have an engineer to pay, and we had $96,000 sitting in the administrative fund account, and I think we have spent about $1,000 asking Heidi to come and take minutes for us, because we didn't have a minutes taker. So we're in very good shape, probably, for a couple of years. So that's good, because in the past, we've always had to put in $50,000 a year, so that's money that could be reserved for projects. Community housing, you always have to give a minimum of 10% of the total, so we had to give $169,300, and we added $103,000 to that. I don't remember why we came up with 103 instead of 100, but we did, and so we're recommending 272.3. For historic altogether, it's $977,030. Remember, some of that is from the last payment for the Heritage Museum. There's also the Benjamin Lincoln House and the Canterbury Street Cemetery and the clock tower on Second Parish. Open space is 364. That's 356 on the laner land debt and 8,000 that we newly recommended for improvements to the laner land. Recreation is 575, $75,000 for the repaving of the tennis courts and $500,000 for the design and construction documents for a new pool. So altogether, it comes out to $2,188,330, which is just under $500,000 more than our total budget, which explains why we're recommending some more bonding. And then we're going to go through the seven projects. Dan and I are going to split them up. Dan, you're going to take this one?
I think there was a strong desire on behalf of the committee to allocate funds to the Affordable Housing Trust, as we just saw. It's obvious.
Can everyone hear?
No, yeah. Dan White, 18 Woodnave, everyone. I think there was a strong desire on behalf of the committee to allocate as much funds as we could to the Affordable Housing Trust. We just saw how important that is to the town, how meaningful it is. This is just one of those years, unlike the past few years where we have given quite a bit of money, that there just wasn't, there was too many competing projects, really. But that said, as Larry just said, we've allocated $100,000 more than the minimum, which is really the best we thought we could do.
The other great thing, or the other good thing about this is they were able to get a $140,000 grant, which went to... a $140,000 grant, which went to something that they were asking for money for. So you could say all told, they got 270, or we're recommending 272 and they got 140 from someplace else. So if this goes through, they'll get over 410 this year, which is not too bad. And I want to point out also that for all of our votes except one, we were unanimous. We actually, you know, talked for a couple of hours and we arrived at consensus. We all felt comfortable at the end with the numbers that we had come up with and we feel very good about that.
For the tennis courts, this was one where, walking through them, they've clearly deteriorated. But they haven't deteriorated so much where they're, you know, not a short money fix, but certainly a fix that is commensurate with the, the, the most efficient way to do it. In the sense that if they would deteriorate more, the cost to fix it is most likely going to be three to four times more. And this $75,000 will buy the same fix that was used at the high school, which over the past seven or eight years is, time has been good to that. So we thought as a committee, this was a good value and a good use of the funds because the tennis courts themselves are used by a lot of different constituents throughout the town.
Next up is the Second Parish Clock Tower. We recommend $32,030. The congregation of Second Parish actually raised, or is in the process of raising, $16,000 itself. So they're asking for two-thirds of the project because not just the clock faces need help, but the whole tower, if you go, if you go to the steeple, it's peeling, it's in bad shape. The, the wood trim is a mess. And so they are raising some of the money themselves. And the church was built in 1747. It's, it's one of our historic gems. The pool at the Country Club. So there was a lot of discussion among the committee about this. And at the beginning of the funding cycle, some people felt, oh, this shouldn't be a CPC project. This should go in a separate article in the town warrant. And we really talked and we said, this is a very non-NIMBY project. The town should have a pool. The town currently doesn't have a pool. It failed. And we thought, people have paid in their taxes to CPC. And what a great way for the town to be able to get a leg up, to come up with design and construction documents so that when it comes down to it, the town will really understand, this is how much the pool is gonna cost, this is what, what it's gonna take. And we actually came to our final vote meeting pretty much with a consensus already that this, this should be funded. Dan?
With the Lainerland improvements, the goals were twofold. One was to kind of delineate the, the boundary between the Lainerland and private property and also allow visitors to better wayfind their way around the area. And earlier on in the process, there was a, you know, a true fence, which is going to be more expensive. We talked as a committee, we talked with the proponents, and the eight grand will allow for markings to be made along the line, in addition to wayfinding, kiosks, and signs that will allow all people to find their way better.
Benjamin Lincoln House. So the purchase price is 972. When we arrived at the final vote meeting, you know, we took preliminary votes at home and then we look at them there. And the average of, there were, there were only eight voters. We had one abstention because one of our members is the treasurer of the Historical Society, felt it would be ethical for him to step back from that. So the eight of us, when we arrived, the average of our numbers, and the numbers were all over the map, came to 650. But we talked and the consensus in the end was, they really need between 700 and 800,000 to, to make this project go forward in a way that they could handle without unduly burdening themselves financially. There was no disagreement that it's a very important project to the town. No one ever felt this, this shouldn't happen. And so we ended up with 772, which was the purchase price minus 200. They have already raised 500,000 toward the endowment. They're in a very good place with their fundraising and we felt this would put them in a good position. And my understanding from talking to the liaison to the project, as well as reading the Hingham Journal, is that they're, they're happy with this recommendation. So that's that. And then the, I think this is the last project, the Canterbury Street Cemetery, which is at the corner of Canterbury and Rockland Streets, right? It's, it's a mess. It's a three-quarter acre lot. You wouldn't even know at this point, it's a cemetery, it's overgrown, with tree trunks toppled and there are important stones that are getting on to 200 years old there and you can't even see them and some of them are broken. And this is kind of a rehabilitation of that historic spot. And cemeteries do help tell the story, the history of a town, and we, we felt that that was important. So we voted the complete ask on that. And I think that's it. Yep?
So first of all, thanks, thanks to you, Dan. Thanks, thank you. You know, the culmination of this, or rather, the start of this is, is something like in August, right? And folks from all over town, from different constituencies, will submit applications that the CPC needs to review. They sign liaisons to all of those applications and then winnow those down to the projects that come before them for funding. So it's actually a lot of hard work to get to tonight where it all looks all packaged up and, and neat. And I appreciate really all of the effort that your committee has gone to and all the effort of the Advisory Committee liaisons to really bring us this package tonight. I think it was our intent really to, to listen for the most part this evening because I think you'll come back before us for a hearing on, on the projects so that we would vote, you know, individually for that funding. But Victor, I didn't know whether you, you all had particular questions you wanted to raise tonight or what, what the format is for you.
We have a hearing also next week. But if any of the AdCom members have questions tonight, I think it would be appropriate to ask them. Something came up from the slides? Seeing none, Karen?
Okay. And I, I didn't mean to speak for you. I think that, I think that was our general posture, but if you have some particular questions, happy to entertain them.
I just wondered, Larry, what is the reimbursement rate? You know, I, I know when CPC started, it was like 40 cents on the dollar, but what is it now?
What do you mean when you say?
The percentage, the matching. The state reimbursed, the state match?
Okay. This year, I think it was 20%. I think, I think it was 20 cents on the dollar. But something funny happened. They just told us this week that 20 more million is gonna be dispersed, but it can't be used till the next funding cycle because, because it's too late.
That's my question. Okay. I just also want to mention, because I know we had some discussion a few minutes ago, kind of about the school budget and, you know, you've, people have seen the board wrestling with a lot of different decisions. The Community Preservation Fund was actually adopted by Town Meeting, I think about 12 years ago. John Davenport, who was here earlier, I think, really was, was one of the individuals who, who brought it forward. These are funds, these are taxpayer dollars that can only be used for specific purposes. So if, you know, somebody's watching and saying, gosh, we're, we're hearing about these other budgetary needs and, you know, things in the school budget, why are we, you know, why are we doing some of these things? These are budget dollars that have specific purposes that they can be used for, which, which is why they're, that's just a special purpose. So I just wanted to make that point for the benefit of those, those watching. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mary. And also, the committee really took to heart a comment you made to Carol Piles and me last year was, which is that the CPC money within the guidelines, within the rules, should really be used for iconoclastic projects that make Hingham, Hingham, and that would otherwise have trouble getting funded any other way. We, we really took that into account.
Great. Any questions? Oh, sure.
Careful with that mic.
Yeah, exactly.
Andy McElany from the, from the Advisory Committee. $500,000 for design documents for the pool? I mean, is that, how much does, would a pool so designed likely cost?
Bill Friend is here and he may want to add to this, but my understanding from the back and forth with them talking to CPC and to me as liaison, is that the pool is gonna cost somewhere between five and seven million. So it's about roughly 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from the Advisory Committee? Any questions from the public on the CPC presentation? Bill, I see you here. Do you have any, anything that you'd like to add at this point? Are you, you're good? Okay. Any, so no further questions from the public with respect to the CPC presentation this evening? Going once. Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We'll see you again.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Well, Advisory Committee, at least you got a little exercise tonight, right? Yeah. Thanks for coming. So we have a couple more warrant articles to do. So we have warrant articles that are asking us to accept pilot payments related to the solar arrays at a couple of the MBTA train stations. Tom, do you want to take us through this or is somebody here to?
Sure. So the MBTA contracted with a private vendor to build a solar canopy at each of the two train stations in town, as anyone who uses those stations is aware. Those, because their, the MBTA is a public entity and subsequently tax exempt, we wouldn't normally tax this effort, except that it is owned by a third party using the MBTA property. So as a result, we enter into what's known as a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes. That process has been negotiated and resulted in, in pilot agreements proposed as articles right now, Y and Z, before you tonight.
So I should have asked this a while ago, or at least while Susan was here, but why do these, why do these particular agreements need to be, go before Town Meeting? Is it because there's a proxy for taxes or?
Yes. My understanding is pilot agreements have to be...
Approved by the legislative body.
Yeah. Attorney Coughlin recommended that.
Okay. Questions, Joe?
No, I've reviewed them. I'm fine with this.
Okay.
Same.
Okay. Any questions from the public with respect to the pilot agreements for the solar arrays at the MBTA train stations? If not, I will accept a motion.
I move for recommended favorable action of Article Y.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article Z.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right. I see Keith. Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks for being here.
Wow. Okay.
Greetings, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I rise tonight to call your attention to two items, one of which you mentioned on the agenda. But first, I'd like to mention a little bit of the history and the process of the town of Hingham Consolidated Flag Purchase Program. So during a previous town administration, 2011, the Consolidated Flag Purchase Program was adopted under an interim department MOU. It was instituted as a cost-saving measure in line with our normal level services budget. It was a way that we thought that if bought in bulk, US flags and other state flags, we could reduce, reduce purchase prices with a vendor and, and curtail redundant shipping costs for each department. To date, the town has saved over $7,000 with that program. The vendor created an incentive also for that program, which is points per purchase. So similar to your personal credit card, when you purchase something, you get so many points. The points have been redeemed over the last seven years to produce flags, flag set stands, which you can see over Michelle's shoulder to your right. And they now, over a dozen have been placed in every single meeting room and in Sanborn Auditorium. The final two flags, which will be placed in the Board of Selectmen meeting room in February of this year. Therefore, this leads me to item two. That now that each and every room in Town Hall has been properly adorned with our national ensign, it seems only fitting that the Board of Selectmen could begin each of their meetings with the pledge of allegiance. Now adopted by our leaders, this continued practice may spread to other boards and committees doing business within these walls. Perhaps in several months, but before the beginning of the next fiscal year, we should take the pulse of this initiative, allowing for ample discussion and vetting, and then deciding if there is a need for further actions such as an actual policy change to include all meetings to be held within this building to begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Questions, Joe?
Well, thank you for arranging the, the bulk purchasing of flags and, and the cost savings. I'm just wondering if that's something that could be made available to the citizens of, of the town at large?
It, it absolutely can. We actually already, I'm not gonna say farm it out, but we extend that courtesy to several organizations in town. Father Bill's Main Spring buys all their flags for all their properties through us. The South Shore, I think it's called the South Shore something Railroad over at Bearcove Park.
Model Railroad.
They, they too purchase and there's several others. Hingham Community Center, people that are not, you know, they're town entities but not, not private citizens as yet. We would like to try to get more of those on board, like Hingham Institution for Savings, other, other businesses that, that we can do business with first. But it is quite possible that a, a town member may purchase it in the future. We may be able to provide that on the website.
Great. And with respect to the pledge, have you spoken to other town committees, members, taken their pulse as to their view on this?
So I see by watching my Verizon Channel 30 that several of the town governments, such as ourselves, that's, that's their Board of Selectmen begin with it. It's not that there, no one else has. I don't have the actual town names off the top of my head because they're, they're pretty obscure and I'm just sort of cruising through. I did notice that each day that the Senate has begun this week, they've started off with the pledge. By law, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we require that each teacher in each classroom commence at all grade levels the pledge of allegiance prior to the beginning of the work day or the school day. So it's not unheard of, I guess.
I was asking, have you taken the pulse of town committees here in Hingham about their...
No committees as of yet. Like I said, I think the, the last room that we have is, is your room because it was a little bit more of, we were trying to keep it in the stature that it was, the wooden poles and the, et cetera, try to keep it in the look that it has, unlike this one, which is an aluminum, glazed aluminum pole, to try to keep that. So that would be our final purchase and we thought that by starting with you, maybe there would be like a trickle-down effect to each of the boards and committees without actually, you know, like cause and effect, you know? Maybe we can do it in that, in such a manner that we don't have to actually write it down because usually when you write things down, there's, there's some sort of reason why, right? So as far as each town, each, each committee, no, I haven't sat in on that, but then I would probably enact the Veterans Council to then after, after we start here, maybe next month, to sort of segue into each one and see who's doing it and who's not. And then we could provide a comprehensive assessment before the end of the fiscal year.
Mary?
Thank you very much for both the, the flag purchasing program and bringing this forward. Tom and I were in Hull a couple of months ago at their Select Board meeting, which, which began with the pledge. Keith, I like the approach. What, just to pick up on what Joe said, I, I would ask that, I think your approach is good in that we can start with the board, but I think it's important to check kind of with the boards and committees and some of the town staff that interfaces. I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, some of the permitting boards where people have to make legal decisions that are subject to being contested and just thinking about the dynamics of, you know, some unintended consequences that I just think are important to do. You know, again, I, I don't know enough about that, but I'm, I'm in particular thinking about the permitting boards on the second floor. So I think getting the, you know, getting the input from the committee chairs and, and the staff is... the staff is just a, a really good idea for going forward. And so, I, you know, I think we'd start here and see how it goes.
Yep. You know, I, I think that, I think that start, starting and stopping, kind of, it's that pause moment before you jump into your business, to be mindful of why you're there and who it is you're serving. And I do think that the Pledge of Allegiance has that effect of kind of making you mindful that you are representing your government when you sit behind the table. You know, I think there's something sort of special about the ritual of the pledge, and, you know, I think frankly, it'll be a nice touch to the Board of Selectmen meeting. And, you know, as you suggest, I think it's, it becomes part of the culture, I think, as we move forward. And so, to start with us makes a lot of sense, a lot of sense to me. And, you know, when you, when you had talked to Tom about this, and he talked to us about it, it was kind of like, oh, yeah, why aren't we doing that? You know? And until you've kind of pointed, pointed out and brought it forward, you know, it's just, I, I think you get caught up in your business, right? Like, okay, let's get to the approval of the minutes, let's get to the public comment.
Right.
And this kind of makes us stop and reflect why we're in the room.
Right. It takes, you know, less than sixteen seconds, average is about eleven, to say it, and to just, right, take that time. That's the official start. Like you said, Karen, you're here to do the business of the government.
Yep.
And what better place to do it than the Government Building? And when you think about it, the tax dollars were made and purchased, you know, through each department to provide that for us, and there's no reason why we can't stop there. I've already assessed, like, some of the school rooms that, and we do have one in the school boardroom as well. So, this whole building is covered.
Yep.
That we might branch on after that to other places that need, need that.
Yep. And, you know, I just think it's important that it's a solemn moment, so, you know, that I think that as, as this sort of trickles down, hopefully, that, that people undertake that in, in, in that sort of, in that vein, I guess. Questions from the public with, with respect to the Pledge of Allegiance? So, just so people are clear, I think the suggestion is that the board begin to add that as, as an item on its agenda to begin its meetings, which I think we can do with our next agenda. So, we will start, start there.
Great.
So, I don't think we need a vote or anything on that.
I see a votes listed. I don't know if we, do we need a vote?
Yeah, we had anticipated the vote, but it kind of formalizes it, but you don't have to.
I guess I just don't see it as a.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it as a voting item.
I don't see it as a vote thing. So, I just think, you know, I think we just add it to the.
Just do it, put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda.
Do it.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks to the other supporters of this who are here tonight. All right. Do we have any appointments tonight? Any appointments?
No.
No?
No.
Selectmen and town administrator reports. Michelle?
Nothing from me.
Tom?
Nothing.
Joe?
Well, I think Tom and Michelle owe us a report from the MMA, which I thought was mixed martial arts, but it's, it's really the Massachusetts Municipal Association. They were both there. I joined them, and it was an incredibly educational experience, and also a good time just to, to meet not only folks in our town, but also from other towns. I don't know, Tom or Michelle, if you wanted to add anything to the experience?
Yeah, I just didn't want to step on you. I didn't know if you were going to. Yeah, it's a great conference every year. All the municipalities are represented across the state. You have finance committee members, and here, advisory committee members. We have boards of selectmen, town administrators, accountants, treasurers, et cetera, represented at the conference. You get a great cross, cross.
Cross-section.
Cross-section of, of each of these local governments and how they do work. So, all of us are different. Every, there's, what, ten different types of governments or so available to the municipalities and the Commonwealth? And it's just really, like Joe said, it's a great opportunity to see how governments are run across the state, get a sense of best practices and who's doing what. The trade show, I, I'm such a nerd, I think I referred to it recently as my favorite hour of the year. It's, you go in, and what it is, is it's just a great opportunity to see what a lot of very, very smart and enthusiastic consultants around the state are doing to help improve government efficiencies. And that's what we're all about in government, certainly here. And I was glad Joe was able to join us. We had some members from the, from the advisory committee join us. So, it's a good opportunity for us to get to know each other outside of this building, and, and like Joe said, too, to get to know some others across the state and build that network. Yep.
Anything else?
Michelle, did you want to?
Sure, I'll just add that there's a lot of good resources there, and I went to a, a workshop in particular on employee wellness programs. So, you just, you come away with all these ideas, all these resources and things that we might be able to implement here in Hingham to make it a better place for our employees, for our residents. I think it's a very worthwhile opportunity every, every January.
Great. Thank you.
Mary? I just want to mention one thing, because it's budget time, and that's, you know.
What you do.
It's what I do. I'm just looking at the forecast, and I know there's going to be a forecast update shortly, but just for, for kind of people to know, if we look at the forecast that was filed with our budget books, our revenue is projected to grow by two-point-two percent from this year to next year, which is two-point-five million dollars. So, that's how big the revenue pie is growing. And I just looked at, at our costs, and some of our costs, you know, things like state assessment, debt service, benefits, those things are set. Twenty-two percent of our budget is going to be growing by seven percent from one year to the other. The big, the big one is, is employee benefits, and again, we may get some new numbers about that. What, what that says to me is that this is going to be a challenging budget year, because two-point-two percent growth in revenue is, you know, you know, we, we've seen revenue growth of, of three and a half, we've seen four. So, you know, as, as we're getting letters, and I appreciated the comments you made about, you know, people with residents, as, as people are talking about different budget areas, I think we just have to keep in mind how big the entire pie is. And the entire pie right now is only growing by two and a half million dollars, or two-point-two percent, which is, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons that we are focused on things like the South Hingham Study Group, and, you know, Joe's been, been heavily involved in that, because as we're looking at the demand for services in this town, there's only a couple of places it comes from. Most of it comes from our property taxes, and, you know, to the extent that it's, it's either us as residents or potentially some commercial development, but that's, that's really why some of the activity in South Hingham is, is appealing to the board. But I also think it's important to just kind of set reasonable expectations, because just as the CPC had very difficult choices to make in bringing those recommendations to us.
Right.
We and our school committee colleagues and the advisory committee will have a, a similar challenge as, as we work to close the budget over the next, you know, six weeks.
Great. Hey, it occurs to me, we've got a couple votes to take before.
I was going to let you adjourn and tell, but I didn't want to interrupt.
So, we, we've got one kind of technical issue that we need to, to vote to open the warrant to replace the Derby Street, the old Derby Street articles. So, we, we caught, I guess, a change in the mapping or something?
Change in the mapping.
So, there's no substantive change in what the proposal is with respect to discontinuance and disposition of that old Derby Street parcel that was part of our vote the, the other night, but, but we actually have to dispose and discontinue of exactly the right parcel. So, we'll do that now. So, unless my colleagues have comments with respect to that, I'd take a motion.
Move to open the warrant and replace the prior submitted warrant articles, GG and HH, for the revised versions attached here, too, and to close the warrant, and to refer Article GG and the referenced plan as modified to the planning board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we have a one-day liquor license chief looks all in order to me. So, I would accept a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stellwagen Beer Company for New Year, New Year Resolutions Bonfire, to be held at Weir River Farm on January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, with a rain-snow date of February one, two thousand and twenty, from six p.m. to nine p.m. Why do I think we voted this? Is this another one?
You did. So, they had a change of date that they didn't confirm until today.
Oh, okay.
So, this, and it was before our next meeting, so it's, it was unforeseen, and we had no way of knowing, so we were able to add it to the.
Okay. So, all the things we talked about last time, the fire plan, the parking plan, everything's the same.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Great. So, moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, my quick report, and then I wanted to, I'll let you know, we're going to move to executive session, but my quick report tonight is, you know, as you heard me comment before, really, we really do appreciate the emails that we get. We all really do read them. So, thank you for sending them along. As Mary suggested, this is a very busy and difficult, challenging time of year, but your thoughts are, are all well-presented and will be considered by all of us. I wanted to thank the chief again for coming earlier and sharing his thoughts about just a very challenging weekend for our emergency personnel, and again, applaud those employees across town and across the Commonwealth who helped settle a very disturbing situation. I wanted to give a little shout-out to the square merchants. I was down there today, and it's a little bit quiet, you know, it's that after Christmas, and the weather's maybe not all that great, and, you know, the stores that I went into said, you know, we could really use some, some traffic down here. So, if you have a chance and you can swing through the square and our, and frequent our other local merchants, we really depend on that vitality, and that's one of those things, I think, that makes Hingham, Hingham. So, I wanted to also give Michelle a little shout-out. Michelle and I were at the Harvard Kennedy School of Government last night, talking with a class that's going to be helping the town of Hingham think about how best to, to pay for the stormwater mandates that we have from the federal government. So, if you remember, when Randy Sylvester from the DPW presented his budget, there's been a ratcheting up of expense to, to comply with federally mandated regulations around stormwater runoff. So, you know, if you think about all of the hardscape that we have in Hingham, all of the runoff from your lawns, from the asphalt, all goes into the storm drain and, and goes into our watershed. So, that the federal government and the town of Hingham, right, have an interest in protecting the quality of that watershed. And so, those, those mandates, though, and those deliverables are quite expensive and will ratchet up in expense. And so, the project that the, the students from the Kennedy School undertake for us is help us think about best practices in terms of funding that. And I just have to say that Michelle is a student of the Kennedy School of Government, and they, she was like the returning, she was like the returning queen when I went in there. I just had to stand out of the way as people rushed up to shake her hand, so she, I was reminded more than once from her professor and the teaching fellows about how lucky the town of Hingham is to have her. We, we know that, and we hope she knows that we appreciate all of her efforts. And then, on a much less fun note, we are going to have a forecast meeting of the forecast group tomorrow, which is advisory committee, board of selectmen, and the schools to, as Mary said, just, you know, from here on out, regularly check in on what the revenue picture looks like, because, you know, a ratchet up or a ratchet down here, we've, we've got to get this right. We've got one opportunity at town meeting to get our budget right, and so we've got to be mindful of the expense part, that's what we're doing here in front of all you, and the revenue part that we'll discuss with the forecast group. So, having said that, I would like to say that the board will convene an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A-three, because discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. The board will not return to open session. Roll call, vote?